Five thirty, we'll call the meeting to order.
Please rise for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for liberty and justice for all.
In your packets was the minutes from the last meeting. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion is second, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, agenda, any additions or changes in the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Motion is there second?
Second.
Motion in the second to approve the agenda, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay, motion carried. First up, Rob Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Rob Johnson, city assessor for the city of Doubles Lake, that come before you tonight to seek a letter of support for the Renaissance Zone program that the city of Doubles Lake has. In your packets, I will have included a development plan which has to be revised with the renewal application that we do. The program is set to expire at the end of twenty twenty five, and so we are eligible for a ten year renewal application. Couple of the things I can touch on as far as change within the program specific to the development plan. On page two, we talked about the block caps, so we currently have forty two blocks within the property zone. The cap right now is at thirty eight and a half. The reason that we're over the cap is because they used to determine your block cap by allowing an extra half block for nonprofit owned and operated properties. They then changed that to government owned and operated properties, so then the cap went down from forty four to thirty eight and a half. So we currently do not have to do any changes to get under the cap, the state's okay with us staying where we're at. We just can't add or move any blocks without getting back under the cap. So the forty two blocks that we have would be what we plan to continue to move forward with for at least the next ten years. Another change that they also made is that properties that have had a project, it used to be once you had a project, you weren't eligible for another one. Now after thirty years, you would be eligible for another project again if needed. So it's another reason to keep the blocks the way that they are, I believe. The next thing I'm going to talk about is on pages thirteen to fifteen is benchmarking, really going to try and start making a push to do better data. Management and collection to show the benefits of the program, not only for the political subdivisions and the taxing entities, but as well as for the projects, property owners themselves. Historically, the data hasn't been collected and kept very well by my office, but that is something we're improving. So one of the key things that I did run in there with the data we do have is how long it takes for us to recover the benefit that is provided. So in essence, the exemption is a property tax exemption. How long does it take for the political subs to recover that? And then average for all projects is four point three nine years to recover that. Now, when you break it down, the bulk of our projects are going to be commercial projects and looking at just the commercial projects, it takes two, an average of two point three years to recover the lost property tax revenue. And then our residential projects is twelve point two five years. So residential projects don't generate as much value when they do those types of investments. That's why we see a little bit higher, but again, bulk of the projects we see are going to be commercial.
So how long are the normal tax exemptions?
So, so the exemption on the previous development plan, it was an all or nothing. If it was approved, you got five years, hundred percent property tax exemption on the improvements. They still pay for the land tax, but nothing on the improvements. That's actually the next thing I'm going to talk about is we revised the investment benefit schedule, which is going to be on page twenty one. And this was kind of the key thing that we really wanted to do because before it was all or nothing. There really felt like there was no incentive ability to incentivize more investment into a property. And so with the investment benefit schedule we created now, depending on how much of an investment you put into it will determine the length of the benefits that you get. And the state does now allow up to eight years in benefits. So we tiered it from three years and then every twenty five percent of your investment, it would go up to up to a total of eight years. On the commercial side, only commercial properties are eligible for that eight year benefit. Residential properties are still only a five year max. And another thing with this too is within the the benchmarking that we did create, I created a table and I put a table in there to show what the average or my estimated amount of property taxes was that was actually exempted during those years. I think the highest year was a total of just short of twelve thousand dollars for all entities. The average was right around fifty five hundred dollars a year in property taxes that were exempted. And again, that's for all political subs that tax within the city of Doubles Lake, so the city, county, school, park, and now the ambulance. One of the things with this development plan too is we've had some turnover within the Renaissance Zone Authority. We're going to make a bigger effort to really push and try to reach out and contact all the property owners within the zone again to make sure that they're aware of the program. And that if they have any projects lined up, how they can take advantage of it. And to just try to see if we can't get some more knowledge and understanding of the program out there. I think it's something that hasn't been done very well and we've had the program in Doubles Lake for twenty years now. And it's just kind of gone by the wayside, we want to redouble those efforts. And the only other thing I've got is that with the exemptions, we all know that the property tax caps are here. When the exemption comes off and there's no longer an exemption comes back on the tax rule that first year, it does count as new growth. So it doesn't count towards that three percent cap, it actually counts as new growth and you can add the three percent on top of that.
Any questions for Rob?
And so what I'm seeking is a letter of support. In order for our renewal to go through, we are required to have a letter of support from the county and the school district.
So if you had a property exempt for five years, for example, and you had a three percent cap every year, they would get the three percent added to that every year or two to get a keep it at value or not?
No, the value would come off of your tax rule.
What I'm saying, when, when it comes out of the five years, do all of those three percent add to it in the end?
So for example.
What gets it to the value? How do you get it to the value? They're always going to be below value.
So say there's a property downtown, it's hundred thousand dollars is the building value, that's going to be accepted. Now that's going to be exempted for the period of five years. When it comes off the exemption, say the value is at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that two hundred and fifty thousand.
So it does jump up to the value?
Right, right.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Not that it's a hundred thousand, you missed out not only five years, but you missed out on what it's actually worth.
Right, no, and that's the incentive is to try and get them to incentivize it so the value is not here.
I just want to make sure I'm tracking that.
That's one of those seventeen levies that's exempted from the
Right.
Three percent. Any other questions for Rob? Bill, do you have a question? Okay.
I would go ahead and make a motion to go and approve a letter of support for the residential or the
Renaissance Zone?
Renaissance Zone, correct.
We have a motion to create a letter of recommendation, is there a second?
All second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Yep. Tanner White. Yep, there you go.
Good to go, awesome.
Yep, there you go.
Well, grateful to be here with all of you, just wanted to take some time to introduce myself. Tanner White, CEO of the future All True CEO or hospital and clinic whenever we can get those papers from the bat again, we're all waiting patiently for that. But I'm grateful to be the current president of the hospital. I started June second and really grateful for that opportunity to, you know, hit the ground running and start making some opportunities for improvement. My philosophy in healthcare is really to bring access to healthcare close to home. And so that's what we're going to do in partnership with All True, we're going to have the support from them to be able to do that. So a little bit about myself, I come to you from Aberdeen, South Dakota, where I spent the last fourteen years. I'm originally from Ellendale, North Dakota, so back to the better Dakota I've been telling people. And for, I worked for Avera and actually my background's in kinesiology, and so I'm a personal trainer by trade. Back in twenty eighteen, I sold my business to Avera to help build a human performance center where we were trying to focus on where we were trying to focus on preventative healthcare. CEO at the time was a guy by the name of Todd Forkel. And so Todd and I have been able to stay connected uh throughout the years. And as he jumped over to All True and Grand Forks, I just kept moving up the ladder with, in healthcare for Avera. And most recently, I was director of network operations where I supported the critical access hospitals in the northeastern part of South Dakota. And really fell in love and grew a passion for the healthcare delivery in rural settings. And so when this opportunity came up, I jumped at it and that was back in January. Uh, did my site visit in March and we all thought this is going to be done by, by now, but it's what we're at. Um, have no reason to believe this won't go through. So I'm just excited for the future of what will be healthcare for the Lake Region. Any question?
Anything for?
Welcome to our community and uh vitally important that we maintain uh adequate healthcare for our population here in the Lake Region and Ramsey County. Um, certainly I know that that's the goal of not only the city, but All True as well. And so certainly welcome you to our community and afford great things.
Awesome. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
Absolutely.
Using yourself.
Nice to meet everybody.
Denton, rumor has it you want money.
That's why I'm here. Uh, Denton Heisler with Lake Region District Health and everybody get a copy of the budget, proposed budget.
It's in the teams. Somewhere on here, it was in here.
So just a few things to point out. Um, first off, the dollars levied or we're asking for did not increase over last year. So you, like, I know everybody's worried about the three percent we stayed. Same dollar amount as last year. We did, uh, in this budget, we are eliminating one position as uh administrative assistant just due to workload. Um, and then also some of the grants that have been cut lately are not in here, but those positions haven't been filled and won't be until we know if there's grant funding for them. We did close the family planning clinic earlier this year. And uh health insurance went up, I believe, by about three thousand dollars per employee. So those are the only real major changes in the budget.
So with the positions you haven't filled or the closing of that clinic, have you had seen any backlash from that there?
So a majority of the family planning uh services, we're going to still continue like with the STI testing and HIV Hep C testing. Um, the only major difference would be the birth control that we're not going to do anymore, but we did get contacts from Grants Works and Fargo Cast Public Health there. Well, I could back that up in a second, but they would do telemed for that and you don't even have to be seen. But also in the new budget that's coming out through the federal government, they cut family planning one hundred percent. So I don't think it would be in existence anyway. We're just a couple of months ahead of the game.
Any questions for Denton?
And I believe the all commissioner meeting, the joint commissioners meeting is the first Tuesday in October, the seventh. But I will send a letter to Candy.
That's usually when it is, is the first Tuesday in October.
Cause I, I think we have till the tenth, right, to get an approval? No, the seventh? And so we're cutting right to the end.
Anything else for Denton?
You guys look it over and come up with questions, you can always ask me later too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Shively and Pollard Brady. You gotta hit the little dude talking on the front there, right in front, right in front. There you go.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm Sandy Shively. I'm the executive director at North Central Planning Council. So a, a little bit of background on this and you should be um, a little familiar with it. In twenty twenty two, we received uh an R whip grant for this program. The grant was used to fund uh the purchase of the van, the retrofit of the van, uh, some of the uh virtual reality videos that we had created. Uh, part of it went to pay for uh the job coach that has been out working in the six counties of our region. And then uh the local match that was provided. Um, that is what we're operating off of now. The grant actually ended in December of twenty twenty four. So right now we're using, we're utilizing local match to pay for our expenses through the end of the year. Uh, in the letter that I sent to Candy, there is a small um, very modest budget on page two of sixty seven thousand three hundred and ninety seven dollars. And then uh the table below that shows how this broke down. So we have gone to all of the existing match providers from uh when we started the pilot program. And to ask for their continued support, I would say that we have had very good feedback on the program at many levels, uh, the high schools, um, you know, the cities, communities, um, economic development people have all had very good things to say about the program and um our job coach Anne. I, um, if you have questions on the actual program with the students and how that's working, I, I'll let uh you ask those of her. I'm here uh mainly as um the administrator and um handling the budget. So you can see there how that sixty seven thousand three hundred and ninety seven breaks down. Uh, and this program, uh, the continuation would run from January of twenty six through December of twenty six. And then we would just go on an annual basis from there to see if we uh continue the program. Uh, that sixty seven thousand three ninety seven is broke down by the match providers by percentage of population. Obviously Ramsey County is more populous than say Eddie County. So you can see the percentages there and how that broke down. We did split forward Devil's Lake and Ramsey County. Uh, so we took Ramsey County and subtracted out the city of Devil's Lake to get their percentage. And um then the county percentage there. So for one year for Ramsey County, it would be nine thousand eight hundred and thirty seven dollars. When we approached the county last time, it was five thousand, but we did have grant funds to um utilize for the program. We do not have that right now, although they are supposed to be opening up the R whip in the fall again, and we may be able to apply for some funding there. But uh they have not in the past let you apply for the work that you're already doing, not continuation. So uh we have talked about some things that we could do differently that would add to the program some value. So we may be able to um apply for some funding there. But uh generally, um, this would be our operating budget and we would probably not apply for those funds to cover the operating.
Why wouldn't you not apply?
We would apply, but it would be for, they won't um fund your operating if you're continuing the program. So it would have to be to fund additional items that we would do. Any questions on any of that?
Why wouldn't you apply to do additional items?
We would.
Okay, you, I misunderstood you then.
What's that?
I thought you said you wouldn't apply.
No, we would. We would. Yep. And if they would let us fund continuation projects, we would certainly apply for that. But in the, the previous four or five go rounds that they had with our whip, they have not let people apply for continuation funds.
So do you have any uh information on how many jobs this has crea- helped create?
Uh, I'm gonna let Anne speak to that.
Anne's fellow job coach for the Mobile Career Exploration Classroom. Um, it's hard to say how many jobs directly a van created. Like, these are high school students, so it's really focused on career exploration and also trying to keep these students in our community. So if I meet a student that wants to grow up to be a welder and grow up to be just like Lee Gessner, I want to connect that student to Lee to be able to get some experience, maybe as a junior, as a junior, to do job coaches and stuff like that. So as far as how many jobs it directly created or put people in jobs, no, we don't really track that. And then tent is really career exploration. So think back to when you were a junior, senior in high school. Think of the ideas. Jason Kraft, did you think you were going to grow up to be a superintendent for the highway department? But giving students ideas and opportunities of what they can be. Like, maybe Jason never even thought, and actually North Dakota DOT is making their videos, maybe Jason never even thought that. He never knew what that position was. So this is really a chance to help kids kind of explore the i- ideas that they have that they might be really good at and really interested in.
But you have had some kids that have, you know, like with Berkestrom Motors or leading edge that have gone into the whatever you call it.
The field, absolutely. Van?
Yeah, going through the van, but there, there's a program where they, their tuition paid for or whatnot.
Yep, that's career builder. And absolutely, and I'm doing some work with an additional hat at the high school. And so there are students that are absolutely going to Wapington this fall and going into uh HVAC program. And they're going to end up coming back to this community to work. And those two programs have really kind of worked together so well. Uh, but definitely promoting career builder, the high demand jobs, seventeen thousand dollars to college. So anytime I can get a kid in my vein, it is, it's career exploration, it's doing a job shadow, it's, do you know what? Co-ops are, like, they can come work for you for two hours in the afternoon, get high school credit, also get paid. So it's really kind of everything we can to kind of get them into this community, but also to kind of figure out what they want to do and hopefully get them back in.
So are we using this mobile career van to educate the counselors in the schools so that they can also put out information?
Absolutely. So not all schools are a little bit different as to who I talk to, to coordinate when I'm going to come, which class I'm going to have, how long I'm going to have them. But usually it is the school counselor. Depends on the size of the school, believe it or not. Not all schools have full-time counselors, so it kind of depends on the school.
The focus really was when we started this program is, you know, my three kids are a prime example. They go away to college and they leave our community and they don't have that. And the focus of this was how can we keep our students here? Can we align jobs and careers that are in our area that they may be interested in already? And if they had to leave to get their education, maybe there would be opportunity to come back to the community. If it was to buy existing business or work for somebody that, you know, they had been um in the job shadow in the past that they could, you know, know the opportunity for them to come back to our region.
And have you had any parents that have gone through the, the van?
So part of the first grant was not only school visits, but it was community events.
Yep.
Which is where I met Lee, I think it was at Ripfest. So he actually watched a video on the goggles. So we've done a lot of community events where parents have come into the van to see the van. I was just at a street there on the Rock for a few weeks ago. Um, but in addition, I've done business visits too. So yeah.
What kind of adult feedback do you get?
I wish I had this when I was in school.
Yep.
And that's the same thing with job shadows. Um, I coordinated a job shuttle program through the high school. And every business I called in this community, oh, not every, but many said, well, this is great. Like, why didn't they do this when I was young? Absolutely. You know, like, I think people are just like amazed that. And I'm a perfect example. Like, I asked my dad all the time, like, why didn't you ask me why I wanted to go into that or where I came up with that idea? And as kids, you know, you, you have this idea, but you don't know all the opportunities out there, you know? So I think that a lot of parents are like, this is wonderful. Like, we need this to help students decide what they want to do. Look at the opportunities out there. I mean, it's unreal. And look at the great paying jobs out there in our community.
Hey, and I do think that this is one of the things that we'll see the repayment back to our community, not tomorrow, but in years to come. You know, it's one of those things that's going to take some time because you are talking to sophomores, juniors, seniors in high school. And it's going to take a while to develop that, to come back to our community and, and show back up and work and say, hey, I did that. And this is why I'm here.
I did talk to every, through another half that I'm wearing, I've talked to every junior and senior at the Devil's Lake High School. Uh, and there are a lot of kids that do want to stay here and it, they're, you know, oh, civil engineering. It's like, would we like to talk to a local civil engineer? And they're like, there's civil engineers in Devil's Lake. And I'm like, well, of course there is. You know, students don't know or have that connection, you know, they don't think of the city having civil engineers, but it is. So it's really, it's really fun and it's really rewarding to try and help kids kind of figure out what's in this community that they can take advantage of. Right now, there's a hundred different careers, virtual crowd, reality careers on the headsets. They are very real. You've had a headset on, right?
I have not.
Oh, I'll come to your office tomorrow. Were you in the van?
At Ripfest.
Yeah, Ripfest with it. Yeah, they're very real. They're each five to six minutes long. Um, so when you're, you put the headset on, you can just see everything. It's in the vet office in the emergency room. And uh, there's a sheriff police. You've watched the two wealthy ones, I believe. They're very real. Um, not quite as good as a job shadow being there in person, but way better than somebody standing in front of the classroom going wah, wah, wah. This is what you do as a welder. They're very, very real. And that library continues to be expanded through the company providing the videos. And we have a subscription to get, as soon as they get new ones, I get those and I download them and put them on the headsets. I have six headsets in the van. Um, so typically I take six students at a time. There are schools that I spend the entire day there. I spend an entire week at Devil's Lake and then a few other odd days. Um, it all depends on the size of the school. So like Starkweather or um North Star, some of those schools, I might only be there half day. And it depends on what the counselor or whoever, some days they just focus on juniors, seniors, whatever. Some days I do sophomores and then any seniors that want to come back. So. Other questions?
Is this contact good for you? Six six two eighty one thirty one?
That's your phone number. Would you like my contact number? Seven oh one, seven four zero, five two zero seven?
Five two four seven?
Five two zero seven. And come see you tomorrow at work if you want, after I see Jeff.
Do not come to my office tomorrow. I, I would love to have you, but just not tomorrow.
I'm taking the van to see manufacturing. So if you haven't seen the van and want to see it, please reach out to me because I would love to bring it to wherever you are and show you. Um, there is some pictures in the package that Candy provided. To give you a little bit of visual of what it looks like. It was very well done.
We have had really good response from the match providers too. New to our program this, this year, just coming here with the Old Lake County. So we were excited to have them on.
As we're just getting into budget discussions, is this something that you need a commitment for today or?
No, we can let you know, it would be nice to know um before the end of the year.
Okay.
We have funding for the end of the year to, to run the program. So it would just be going into twenty twenty six.
Sure.
Yeah. And then we would obviously not need the funds until I set up invoices the end of December.
So basi- basically this is funding for twenty twenty six. You're ready? Same as what we're doing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So since we're not writing the check today, thank you for coming.
Yeah. Uh, Sheriff, you're up.
Well, good evening. We'll start off, we got, got a couple of requests for uh training out of state for, for out of state travel. Uh, the first one would be for Ally Johnkey. She wants to go to the Professional Development Institution in St. Paul uh for female rifle skills. And this would help her with her, she is a team member of our special incident unit. And with that being said, uh, reached out to the commander of the unit and he would agree to pay the registration and the cost of the ammo for her to go. And it would only cost me for her hotel rooms and per deal. Um, I think it would be beneficial for- I think it would be beneficial for her to go get some specialized training in operating her firearm, especially the rifle. She hasn't had much exposure to it. These guys are really good at what they do.
I'd move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve out of state travel, travel for Deputy Yonkey. Any other discussion? Obviously I have to ask, is it in your budget?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
So the second request would be a request for myself. Me, it's September ninth to the eleventh. I'd like to attend the M O C I C annual conference. I attended the one down in South Dakota and it's very beneficial. I brought back a lot of new ideas. Made some good connections. So the registration cost is a hundred and ninety-five dollars and the rooms are a hundred and four dollars a night. And I'd be there three nights.
And that's unbelievable for a tourist destination like the Wisconsin Dells. For hotel rooms.
Yeah. They're, they're actually pretty good when it comes to conferences and stuff like that.
Okay.
I, I, when we went there, they asked if I was coming on the conference because it was half.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the travel for Sheriff Lang. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
So the next thing I'd like to discuss with you is going to be the juvenile detention. This is something that's not in my budget. But it affects the county. The juvenile detention center in Ground Forks is upping its rate from two hundred and twenty-five dollars per day to three hundred and fifty dollars per day. And some of the things that they don't include in here is a lot of these places, if we don't got a contract with them, we're not getting the bed space. Right now, it is very difficult to find a place to place a juvenile. I've been talking with Jenny and with Sheriff Rhodey. She pulled up our twenty twenty-four stats. What we paid for in twenty twenty-four and what it would be with an increase. You can see it's about a twenty thousand dollar a year increase. I guess what I'm looking for is, I think if Benson County and Ramsey County join forces and go in. And that, see if we can get a deal to purchase or contract for one bed, then we would share it. Some of the discussion was if we had an opportunity where we had two individuals that needed to go, we would sit down and have to prioritize it. But I think that'd be a very rare occasion. But at the rate things are going and we can't place them or we're traveling Bismarck or further all west, just to place a juvenile. I think it'd be worth exploring.
This isn't something that's an everyday occurrence then?
No, it's not.
It certainly happens.
So did they give a reason on why they're up bringing it so much?
No, you know, you're looking at a different facility and their staffing, I'm guessing, and.
It takes a lot more to house juveniles than it does adults. There's a lot more.
For two twenty-five to three fifty, again, is expensive. But what creates that extra expense?
Probably because it hasn't been raised in a number of years. And they're probably trying to catch up with where the costs are actually at.
Because it's quite a jump.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. It was quite the shock when we seen it.
When I seen it, I got cold. I was shocked. Because it's a lot.
Yeah.
So currently, we don't have a contract with?
Currently, we do not have a contract with anybody.
Okay.
But Bismarck won't take anybody unless you got a contract. Ward County's going that way. Ground Forks has been good to work with so far, but I think once this new rate kicks in, we better have a contract.
Have there been discussions about the contract being for a lower rate or just guaranteeing that we have the space?
A lower rate.
Okay.
And I think that's why I go with Benson County because.
We're dealing with a lot of the same juveniles.
Right. And.
In Benson County.
I just don't see us landing two juveniles at the same time to go. They'll need a bed space somewhere. But if we can split that and get it at a lower rate.
And the contract doesn't preclude us from paying the higher rate if there's available. Guaranteeing that we have the space should we need it.
Right. Because basically what you're doing when you enter in the contract, you're paying for the bed if you use it or not, in a sense.
But the, the time in transportation is also something that has to be taken into account as well.
Oh, absolutely. You know, because if you got one down in Bismarck, you could run down, pick them up, bring them here for a hearing, turn around, and they said, no, you're taking them back. So you're taking another trip back to Bismarck to take them to wherever you got them housed.
And for what it's worth, we try not to place juveniles in detention as much as we possibly can. These are edge cases where the child is a danger to themselves for controlled substance purposes or a danger to the community. There is occasionally, as I'm sure some people remember, some dangerous juveniles assaulting senior citizens that need to be removed immediately before we can place them at Y C C. So having, having a place to take them makes it easier, not only on Ramsey County and Benson County, but if a Devil's Lake police officer makes contact with the juvenile who has a pickup and hold issued for them, Devil's Lake is responsible for transporting that person. But it's, if, if it's a Ramsey County pickup and hold, we're responsible for the bed, but they have to get the juvenile there.
So with this, us paying, for instance, there's no recouping any of this from the parent.
No. I, I, I understand.
How is there no recouping if, if my child is under eighteen, I'm not responsible for my child?
Not.
My child gets in trouble, I just say, you let Ramsey County take care of it.
Well, a lot of times there's not a.
But what if there is, is what I'm asking.
That's not the way that the juvenile justice system is designed. We're operating under century code here. I definitely understand where you're coming from and can't disagree that we should be holding parents accountable for their actions of their children. But when we're accusing children of delinquency and crimes, it doesn't really reach the parents.
Well, that's why the parents, my opinion, that's why the parents don't take care of the kids because there's no consequences for the parents.
I mean, I, I get we need something, right?
Yes.
But it's just frustrating that you can't even recoup them.
So you said that juvenile detention doesn't come out of your budget currently?
Currently, it doesn't.
That's a county general fund, I believe.
Oh, okay.
But I just wanted you to be aware that this is going to make a big jump. And I think we got an opportunity. If we sat down with Benson County, say, the sheriff and one of their commissioners and Jeff and I, and talk through this and agree if we can do one bed, communicate with them and cut, cut some type of deal or try.
But I, I think we'd be a fool not to just try. But Benson County is going to be paying the same as we're paying. Like, if they're going to need a bed.
Right.
It's worth pursuing. I think it's worth pursuing too.
I agree.
So, I, okay, I can orchestrate that.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
Not particularly. He, he's going to do some investigation and bring something back to the commission.
All right.
Yeah, thanks. So just a couple more things. I kind of briefly touched on this before, by replacing in-car cameras in our squad cars or units that we got are getting really old. In fact, Motorola just told us that they no longer get to service the type of system we got in their car. So if one breaks down, there's no parts available for them. So I priced out to put two new in-car cameras within the two new squad cars that are being outfitted. One bid came in at seventeen thousand sixty-six dollars and forty cents. The other one is thirteen thousand seventy-six dollars. And that's for two units. The big difference between the two is there's one has a one-year warranty and the other one has a five-year warranty. So it's basically the same program. We already got our computers. We wouldn't have to upgrade any of that. It's just, just the camera system and the recording system within our vehicles.
How much trouble do you have with stuff, technology being what it is? I was going to ask the same question because you could get, oh, a year goes by and you're spending another thirteen thousand or something.
We don't, knock on wood, we haven't had a lot of issues. Maybe a camera goes down. We've been lucky so far. We've been, I think since I've been sheriff in the last three years, we've only had them go down twice. Is that? We had, we had like the little monitor that's in the car that we can see which way the camera's pointing. We can shut the record on and off. That went down, so we had to send it in to have it fixed. And what is that, something like that you could ask? Well, that one was six hundred dollars.
I was going to ask, is the warranty inclusive or is it, you know, it only covers this, not that or?
It pretty much covers everything.
Okay.
But what they will do is if you go the year, then they'll send you out a notice saying, or asking that you can purchase extended warranty for quite a bit more. So.
You get a better rate if you do it up front.
Right.
Just like a car.
Right. So I guess it's just a matter, do we want to go with the five-year warranty or the one-year warranty? I kind of set my budget up to replace two of these a year. I budgeted for about thirty thousand for the two. I was figuring they're going to be about fifteen thousand piece.
So we're going to go to seventeen thousand. You still save thirteen? And you wouldn't have to, one could go down. Over the warranty period in a year. It's going to cost more than what it's going to cost for the warranty.
Well.
It costs six hundred dollars for the old to replace the, what's it going to cost for one? I'm thinking you're going to be looking at twelve hundred bucks.
Could be. Especially with everything going up the way it has been.
But both of these bids are for Motorola, right?
Right.
It catches the one.
You have preference?
Based on what I, you know, I just bought an extended warranty for nine hundred dollars for our body cameras. Yeah, they cost a little bit less than this. I think a guy could probably get by on a year warranty and then reevaluate. Everybody I talked to has had pretty good success with these. They've been around for a while.
Take, take the year and see where we're at and go from there.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion. Oh, it's second time.
There's a motion to accept the bid for thirteen thousand seventy-six dollars for the two camera systems? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
And my last request is to purchase one more radar unit. We've moved kind of fast on the first one due to the fact that we got that twenty-five hundred dollar donation. We wanted to get that here so we can make sure we add it so we can get it in the car and get people that donated some acknowledgement for that. But I was looking for three thousand six hundred and forty dollars to replace one more radar. And I was budgeting for this to replace two radar units in this year.
Moved to approve the bid for thirty-six forty for the radar unit.
Is there a second?
All second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
So I got unless you got something for me.
Thank you. Jason?
Good evening. All right. We will start with quotes for a couple of big culvert replacements. The culverts were, were purchased back in twenty-three. I got the quotes in yesterday. The, the low quotes came in from Johnson Excavating on both sites. And I would like to accept the, or ask for a motion to accept these quotes from you guys for the installation of the two culvert sites.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve these two sites. The eleven thousand dollars to take care of both of them.
Each site.
Each site. So it's twenty-two thousand.
Yes, and we're going to be assisting in, helping with these as well. We're going to haul the fill and stuff like that. But anyway, the quotes are, that's what we're.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all opposed, say nay. Okay?
The next thing I would like to talk to you about is I met with Paul from K L J. Had a brief conversation over this. He helped me put together some quotes for six spots of soft spots that are, are not healing. They're very bad on Ramsey County four, just north of Ramsey seven. And then there's four spots on Ramsey County seven, the first two miles that you head east. It's not going to be, it's not going to be inexpensive. It's going to be an expensive fix because they're so big. One of them was like thirteen hundred and some feet long, twenty-four feet wide. We do have money available that we were able to transfer over this year. So we have some money available to set aside to do some of these projects. So they, the quotes just went out for these. We did notify the journal and I tried to get Michelle to get on the website for us, the county website. And we did also mail out to some local contractors that have expressed interest in quoting the project. And there'll be more to come in that in August. They're not due back till July, but just, you know, that's probably going to be a pretty big number when that comes in. Hiring update, we'll jump to that. Oh, no, we'll go to, I'm sorry, I missed the line here. There's that request we had, we talked about earlier this, about a month back about putting a culvert in Ramsey County four. That is in that biggest soft spot on Ramsey County four where the water is present along the road. Jay Neisness is going to go in and meet with the water board once again. I have been in an email conversation with the water board and again with K L J, getting information, sharing it back and forth. So we're going to get that ironed out because we would obviously like to put the culvert in the road before we fix the soft spot. So we're trying to get the, trying to get that pushing forward prior to what we decide on soft spot repair. I'll have more on that in the next meeting. I'll go to the water meeting and then I'll come over. Next, our last position has been offered and accepted. Candy's been wonderful with me to help me get this done. We got the backgrounds done, the drug screenings are done, and he will start Monday morning, the twenty-first. So props to Candy for all the help on that. The CRP projects are, they were bid and, and there's, we've been updated by the contractor. I'm glad and they're going to start August first roughly, tentatively. But the completion date is October eighteenth on those, so they're going to have to. I mean, they're going to have to stick pretty close to that with the building days there. So that's the four sites that we've been waiting on for since twenty-two. So that'd be nice to get that going. Update on the salt storage facility. I talked to Gleason today. Once again, that data. Once again, that date has changed. He's now saying August eleventh, but he only has till the thirty-first. He says it's gonna take three weeks. I don't know, we're, we're hoping he can get it done. Um, not really much we can do if he can't, but we got, we're just trying to get it done ahead of time so we get asphalt inside the facility before winter hits. If not, I have talked to Wade and I have backup plans there, but as of now, we will, fingers crossed, we get it done. Um, looking ahead to the future for twenty-twenty-six, in this year's budget, there's money set aside. To purchase the class forty-two road chips. So I called for, um, quotes for those. And the only one who quoted was Gowon Construction. And for the twenty-five hundred ton of class forty-two road chips. The total came in at sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That breaks out to be twenty-five dollars and fifty cents per ton delivered. And again, this is for the twenty-twenty-six chip seal project, which is Ramsey County three from Ramsey County two. All the way up to North Dakota State seventeen. So I would ask for a motion.
You said that was in this year's.
It's in the budget for this year. We always purchase the year ahead, so we have them on hands. We can get stock dialed in, in place for the following construction season.
So moved.
Second, there's a motion and a second to accept the bid for sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty for. Class forty-two road chips. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
And the last thing I have for you guys is we held two interviews here last week. We had two engineering firms. Put in to do the construction and engineering for our C R P projects. Um, I sent you guys a list of those in there, in the, my agenda. Um, there was a three-person, three-member committee of myself, Commissioner Wilhelm and Commissioner Hodas. It was W S B Engineering out of Bismarck slash Fargo and then our local branch of K L J Engineering. Um, both interviewed very well. Um, that was a good interview process, Paul.
Yeah.
And, uh, anyway, at the end of the, at the end of the, uh, interviews, the committee. With myself, we'd like to make the motion to accept the recommendation for K L J to do the construction engineering on the C R P projects.
So moved.
Second, there's a mo-. Motion and a second to accept K L J as the engineer for the C E R P projects. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. So on this, uh. Gladden Construction, you need a motion to sign that. Is there something we have to sign for that?
Uh, for this, we will. For the construction engineering, we will. And, and I don't know, Candy may have received something that I didn't see.
So we need a motion to sign that now, or correct? We need a motion so I can sign that. Oh, that would be good. That, that, that's a new business. Is that correct?
Okay.
Sorry.
No, you're good. I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I don't know. They didn't send it to me, so they must be looking for, for something from you guys. Um. I was gonna talk to, uh, I don't know who, who will see our minutes or who watches our meetings, but. The FEMA deadline for the townships from the twenty-twenty-two forty-six sixty disaster is this construction season. Um, some of the townships are getting, turning in invoices and things like that. We are paying out some. But the ones that haven't done it, Kevin sent out a reminder. I'm gonna do another reminder. If they're not done this year, that's it. We, we forfeit the money back. So if any townships are listening, they need to. Get whatever they got coming or check with the office, contact myself or Brent. I have Brent up to date on all that. He's got a copy of everything we have, so. We, we need to make sure we get that out to our townships, cause I know they can all desperately need, always use gravel and things like that, so.
Okay.
And you guys running any township advisors, just remind them to double check. They're more likely good, but there's still a handful that have money. Anybody else have anything for me?
Looks good.
Um, there will be a few things with this construction engineering. I have to visit with Paul when we're done. I haven't done any of that because I wanted to, until we. Made the motion, but I know we have to send a copy of the minutes and a memo, copy of that little memo to the state. Get that approved and then there'll be contracts and things. Agreed. That we will, uh, have to get signed, so.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I guess you give me an update on that. Um, there got three subcuts left. Um, the, all three of those are in places where they have to put central line culverts in though. So we'll be staking those in the next couple of days. They'll get those put in and I'll do the subcuts over the top of that. Um, so then I should be able to get going on the main line after that's done.
Okay.
So they got started in earnest this week, finally. I guess another, um, update would be for the next round of flex grants is open now. So if you guys have projects in mind to submit for, um, it's open until September nineteenth. So like if you guys wanted to pave the truck route or something like that or submit for that, there's not a ton of money out there statewide this year, but a. Move more than likely fill, so. Um, there's an informational webinar the state's putting on on the twenty-second from ten to twelve. So if you go to D O T dot gov, D O T dot N D dot gov slash flex fund, you can sign up and watch it if you're interested. Um, otherwise, if you just kind of bring any project ideas, just send them my way and we'll try to get an estimate together for you.
All right, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Moving on to unfinished business, lease for the abstract office.
I'm getting there. Uh, sat down with the courthouse committee today. Uh, go over some last details before I take that lease agreement to the abstract office. Um, I will. Have a full and final lease to present to Downey and to the commission. Uh, the goal is to have wet signatures, uh. At, or at least in the near vicinity of the next commission meeting so that there can be some certainty. Uh, with the same October first date as has been discussed in the past. Um, but have some certainty as to what's gonna happen over the next couple of months, uh, and. At least put things in, uh, stone so that. We can start making plans for next steps for the courthouse and for the abstract office.
Good. Anything else on that?
That's all I have.
Uh, one rule. Uh, last I heard, we had three possible out of the five.
I spoke to one, got one other individual that. Said he would.
Okay, well, you got four out of five. Is this the beating we have to decide on that?
The first meeting in August, but I need letters of interest.
Oh.
To make it official.
Get, make it official.
Please.
Okay.
Okay.
I've only gotten one. In the city, Henry.
Okay.
So nothing from.
Brandon.
Adam.
And your guy.
Corey Ross.
Corey Ross, okay. And we need one more yet, otherwise. S O L again. Okay. Um.
Two weeks. Roughly. And letters of interest from those that have indicated that they are interested. Okay.
Okay. Anything else on that?
No.
Okay. New business, uh, discussion of opioid settlement. There's another settlement that we. Can sign on to.
There's a couple of settlements coming down the pipeline. One, uh, involves, uh, Purdue Pharma. And, uh, the Sacklers, who I believe are large stakeholders in the business. And then there's an additional one that I think just came in earlier today that involves. Alvagen, Amne- Amneal, Apatex, Hikma, a, a large variety of manufacturers. Uh, we don't have information for getting involved at this point. They're just more noticing us that these things are coming down the pipeline. Uh, when that information comes in, I'm in contact with the AG's office already, so. Once that comes across, I'll get that prepared as much as I can to hand off to you to take across the goal line. Uh, if there's information I need, I think Candy will have most of what I need. And, um, otherwise, the deadline for the first one involving Purdue is September thirtieth. To get our, uh, opt-in completed by, and the one involving. The number of manufacturers is like October eighth, I believe. Uh, I'm gonna stay on top of that so that we can get that done and finished well before those deadlines. So it's not a worry of missing out on these settlements. Just for informational purposes, the manufacturers, uh, their settlement is gonna be. For a total of seven hundred and twenty million, uh, that will be distributed across the involved parties. Uh, which is nationwide. And then, uh, the one involving Purdue will be six point five billion that will be paid out to the parties that opt in as well. Uh. That obviously doesn't all come to us, that's in pieces. But that's, uh, I'll keep you all updated and Candy will as well, uh, as more information comes in on that.
Uh, moving on to policy on individual comment periods, uh, for the board meeting.
Yes, I had asked Candy to add that in. Uh, this is a recent change. Uh, by the legislature, uh, regarding, uh, individuals' ability to. Or individual right to comment at public hearings. Uh, that's been included in your packets, I believe. Um, it's not really something that we need to do today. If that's something that the commission is interested in. Uh, as, uh, Aaron Burst with Endaco has indicated that. It would be good to have a policy in place just so you don't have that one rogue, uh, commenter who. Says they have a right and you can't limit their rights and that just becomes. More of a headache to deal with than just passing a resolution that establishes a policy. Um, we're not gonna limit anybody's right to express themselves, but we have to have it done in a calm and orderly manner. In order to maintain the decorum in these meetings. So, uh, if that's something that the commission is interested in. I can draft a proposed resolution, uh, with details on what the policy would be. Um, and I believe that takes effect August first. So, um, I'll probably try and have that ready to go by the first meeting in August as well.
Okay, I think that's a good idea. There's no sense in.
Thanks.
Wait, waiting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I can get that work done.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything else on that? Any comments from the?
Do we need to set, do you want any parameters initially? You wanna, or you just wanna?
Well, right now it's two minutes, right? I mean, that's on the.
Uh, five minutes, I think is what's.
Is it five minutes?
I think it's five and then we can adjust that and.
And I, I, I would recommend that we just keep it mostly the same, not completely change the process. It's more just formalizing the parameters of getting to come up and comment. It's. I mean, the water board meeting is a good example of limiting everybody to be cordial and keeping things moving along. But I, I don't know that I need anything specific from the commission at this point. Um, I'll kind of keep in line with what I've seen the practice of the commission in the past be. And if there are issues, as long as I have a mostly complete resolution to present to you all. Uh. Quick changes should be easy to make and we can still pass that resolution at the next meeting.
Yeah. And I think the Water Resource District Associations have, and their attorney has come up with a, a template.
Yeah.
So to speak, and all the water resource districts across the state are adopting those and adjusting it. To fit their needs or, or what have you. And I think they're, the main thing is the number of minutes and then the total number of. Of minutes allowed for public period.
And that's, that is the draft that I have, the template from the water resource, uh, districts is. What I will operate off of because I see no reason to recreate the wheel every time.
Right.
Yep. Anything else? Okay, approval of the VA credit?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the VA credit. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Endor of claim, two fifty, sixty-one, two oh one.
That's me again. Um, I brought this to your attention a couple of months ago. Uh, informed the commission that we had received a demand letter for settlement of, uh. Failure to notice mortgagees or mortgageors, excuse me, uh, when foreclosing on a tax, uh, foreclosure issue. Uh, I've worked with Candy and, uh, also with Endor. Uh, ultimately, it's been decided and it's within our coverage with Endor that the demand for thirty thousand dollars from the. Uh, mortgageors, uh, should be paid out of the, uh, policy. Um, I'm in agreement with where we're at, uh, as far as what we have in our own records. Um, part of that thirty thousand dollars would be the. Six thousand. Part of that would be six thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty cents that we would have to contribute. That would be the. Proceeds from the auction and sale of the property. That would supplement the thirty thousand dollars. So Endor is really only paying out the twenty-three. Six thirty-nine and we would be providing the extra six thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Uh, and that would be paid out to the, uh, plaintiffs in that case. Uh. Are there details, anything else you wanna know about that? Uh, it's not really something that I need a resolu-. I would appreciate the resolution, but this is what we have the insurance reserve fund for is to. Make sure that the county is protected from these sorts of lawsuits that can be very costly. Um.
The only thing I have is we changed our policy or how we handle this, so we don't do it again.
That it, I don't think it's an issue with policy. It's an issue with, we're all human beings and sometimes things fall through the cracks.
Okay.
Uh, this isn't something that, this is something that happens in every single case and this is just, uh, mistakes happen. And that's what we have the insurance for.
Okay, everybody cool with that? Anybody wanna make a motion?
I would so move. Second.
Motion and a second to.
Pay thirty thousand dollars.
Bless this, whatever it is, okay?
And, and that, just for additional information, Endor will transmit that money to us. And then we would make the payment out to the plaintiffs.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions? All in favor of the motions, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Uh, N D A C O three. Uh, N D A C O three percent cap, that's me, um. I think it would behoove us to have Aaron Burst or somebody come and have a public meeting. To. Let everybody know how this three percent cap actually works. I see a lot of. Potential to have angry taxpayers when they see the three percent cap isn't a three percent cap and that's. Out of our hands. I mean, it's how the bill was written. I was just looking, is that something the commission feels should be? Would be a good idea or?
I think it'd be a great idea if we can, i- if we can work that into his schedule.
Okay, I I mean, it doesn't have to be Aaron either. I mean, whoever would be somebody to come here.
Linda be a better explainer of that. She's the one that. Uh, took the reins at that conference. But.
Leave it up to them, I guess.
Yeah.
Someone from the association.
Right, cause I, I mean, there's a lot of. Tech, there's a lot of technical stuff in there that. You know, everybody can do simple math and they can take three percent of what they paid last year and add that. To what, you know, and it's not exactly how that's.
Excluded some.
Yeah, there's.
Well, and I don't know if that's necessarily the the limit, isn't the limit on on. What our budget is and not what somebody's valuation is, right?
Right, that's, that's what I mean, you know, so.
I asked that question earlier.
Right.
Because if that wouldn't event where you get the actual money, why would you ever? Break. You know?
Right.
You would just totally mess up that office.
Right, and that's, that's one of the things that, you know. If you have something like that coming off your taxes or your taxes or, you know. Your taxes are going to follow your valuation. It's not going to be the three percent.
Well, if that was the case, you would have everybody in the asking.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, um. We'll figure that out and we'll try and get something.
I think it's a great idea.
You know, before the taxes. Tax statements or whatever go out, so people have a chance to understand it, you know, I'm sure there'll be. Eighteen people there, but at least we gave them the opportunity to educate themselves. Okay, we'll do that. Uh, twenty twenty six budget special meetings. Um. It's probably gonna behoove us to do special meetings this year because. Of the complicatedness of what's coming up. Um. What are your thoughts there, Candy? Just? Do it as it comes about or you want to actually? Do some planning here?
Do we just? Do we want to see how it? Starts out? With scheduling? With meetings or?
When does it have to be done by?
October.
Over ten, right?
Seven.
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 So is there no? Preliminary budgets that need to be done by the August deadlines anymore or is that? Cause before we used to scrunch them all in the end of July.
Yeah, and that was because of the August. Estimated tax statement. So you needed. Everyone's preliminary figures.
Right.
Where? You know. I need to.
Or we have it this year?
I need to go back and.
Well, I think we need.
I just need like peace and quiet to like. Reread it.
Right.
Three days crunching and then I'll be honest with you. And then we're voting on something just because we're voting to meet the deadline.
Right.
We need to be voting on. Actual things that need to happen.
Yeah.
You know, cause and then Candy's. Uh, I don't expect Candy to be here every night because we are putting the budget together. That's not fair to her.
Right.
We need to be on top of this a lot better than we have been.
But, uh.
I mean, the the department head should already be starting the budgets.
I would think so.
I hope.
One political subs at the, are you getting budgets from political subdivisions?
Um, they're, they're working on it.
Okay.
But the this three percent is. You know. Hmm. Kinda has everybody in a.
Because nobody understands.
Tizzy. Mm hmm.
I mean, like, like you said, I can sit here punching the calculator with three percent.
Right.
But that's not what it is.
That's not what it is.
It's fine, you know. Right, and now I gotta become a lawyer to read it. I mean, real, it's crazy.
You also need a CPA.
Yeah.
So, uh. What are you thinking? Three, three extra, three special meetings or?
How about if I just like the next meeting I start scheduling?
I think if you start scheduling.
Budget. You know.
And then at the end, if we need one or two.
Like we just, you know. We just start with that.
Okay.
And then.
Cause then we see what budgets are coming in at.
Yeah.
You could call it a drill. We can call that, it's not that.
Mm hmm.
At least we have an idea of where we're standing.
Yep.
You know?
Yeah.
Yep.
I would recommend that since it's the October seventh date and everybody on the commission is busy. Uh, probably look at that last week in September of setting a special meeting to.
No, not the last week.
Okay. But some special meeting in case that there is a needed time. Maybe we don't need to advertise it, but at least have all the commissioners aware that. That date needs to be blocked off in case there's later deadlines.
You want to put that together then for the next meeting or?
Yeah, I'll, I mean, I'll. I'll put together a list, like I'll compile my list of who. You know, who usually comes in, you know, get all that organized and.
I mean, I think we should. Correct me if I'm wrong, Andy. I think we should be able to have or try to have the next two meetings here. So that gives us two meetings in September and if we need a special meeting to make decisions.
Right, right.
Like we need.
Yeah, we.
Preliminary done by the end of.
Yeah.
Right.
So then if we have a special month of September.
Yeah.
Candy's gonna have to put stuff together. We're gonna have to make some tough decisions, I'm sure. And and there's gonna be some changes by the heads. They might have to go back and rethink. That way it gives them time too.
Mm hmm. But then I was thinking to, to try to get everybody. And more people like the second meeting, starting it earlier.
Yeah.
To get more people in, but. I'll see what I can. I'll see what I can do.
I'll be honest with you, if people are just starting their budgets. They're in trouble.
Yeah.
But some hardly have anything.
Right.
Well, yeah.
But I mean.
Yeah.
I'm saying the larger, like the sheriff or even.
Yeah.
Yourself. I mean, you, you get caught up in it because. It's pretty well laid out. Just putting different numbers from here to here. Followed by.
Mm hmm.
Just any of the same problems you're in. I'd rather be over prepared than under prepared.
Oh, absolutely. Okay. Clears mud then?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, then we got the. Federal aid contract for Gladon Construction. That was in your packet, I believe. Need a motion to. Sign that.
I think that's what the. Reading added, that's what we need.
Okay, so they're. Just pretty much formalized, uh.
I'll make that motion. Signing the federal aid contract along with Gladon.
Yeah.
There's motion, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
All right.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Uh, date for the new Breeze snag and clear project, tentatively for the August nineteenth meeting. We need a motion for that, set that officially.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second for August nineteenth meeting for the new Breeze snag and clear project. Any discussion?
I got one.
Yes.
My wife, my wife and I are gonna be gone for the. Uh, fiftieth wedding officially, well, to the twentieth.
Okay.
They say they're holding.
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah, congratulations on fifty years.
You're lucky your wife puts up with you. Okay, I'll then Commissioner Hodis will still have a quorum, so that's okay with everybody?
Yeah.
All right, um.
Clock? Let, yeah, let's set six.
Six to seven.
If I have service, I can call in.
Nope.
No.
No.
On vacation.
Yeah, you're gone on vacation. I don't think you need that. You know, no sense of us getting in trouble with your wife.
Blame Jeff.
Uh, all in favor?
Uh.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Visitors, delegations. I don't see anybody that wasn't here, any announcements from anybody.
I have nothing.
Seeing none. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Another doormaker thing.